Thanks for everyone coming out tonight on a school night. I think this is important. Thanks to the candidates for stepping up and volunteering to do this. For those first timers and for those incumbents and those repeat. Like I think Mark is coming out to do it again. He did it in the past. You know, I was thinking about how important this is. We spend roughly two thirds of our taxes on the schools. And the budget is about twice the size of the city. And yet we spend a fraction of the time, you know, we're kind of overwhelmed with the politicking for the city. And not so much time is put into selecting people to be on the board. And I think it's a very, very important position. So I'm glad we're doing this. I hope we can expand on this in the, in the future. There were some questions about the format. I was planning on just going through questions alphabetically, but I can mix that up and do it randomly. I can just pick names from a hat. If people have any concerns about the order effects, you know, some were that, oh, advantage if I go first, or if I go last. So does anyone, anyone, you want me to just do it randomly? I can just pick a name from a hat and we'll go like that. Good. You guys are good with that? Okay. I put everyone's name in the hat, so I'll just pull one and we'll go that way. I have five questions. I think, you know, a little bit of an introduction. And where I'll ask you about yourself. I was thinking it's sort of like two minutes per question. It's kind of like speed dating, but without the romance, right? So we'll just kind of make it conversational. Let you talk. I might ask a follow up if I think it will help clarify things. Everything should be cordial. I'm not looking to jam anybody up. A couple of the questions are going to be a little bit heavier. So I think what we'll do is we'll start with the heavier questions first. About the audits that everyone has been talking about. Talk about school safety, which I don't know if anyone saw that, that that news alert that came out. CDC just announced that 2020 was an all time record high of gun deaths in the country. Astonishing. I mean, and, and it took an enormous toll on, on black men. And so when we talk about school safety, I think that's, I think this is, I think it's important to keep that in mind. I think then we can go from there. Maybe talk just about the cost of education and the outcomes that we're getting. And then maybe shift back to something a little lighter. Talk about curriculum instruction where you fit into that. And then, you know, let you give your final best pitch about why you're the right person for, for this job. What you, what you bring to this equation. Before we get to that, if we have time, and I hope we do, to take a couple of other questions that either Axel fields from the comments that come in, or ones that we have received over the last couple of days, I would like to do that. So two minutes is sort of the maximum, you know, I'm an advocate for keeping things real tight. Short, clear, to the point. So with that, if nobody has questions, we can just start. And I'm going to start with the introduction. I'll pick a name out of the hat. Whoever that is, you can unmute. And then I will just ask you a few introductory questions, just so everyone can get a little, know a little bit about you, but it shouldn't take very long. Real kind of social history kind of stuff. All right. So I'm going to pick, I'm going to pick a name.
Chris, do you want me to run a timer on that, or you just want to roll with that when you're asking the initial questions?
You know, run a timer for me, because I'd like to keep, I'd like to keep it the same.
Yeah, no problem.
I'm afraid I'm going to get these all. They're little pieces of paper. I just printed out. All right, Mark Stuckey.
Mark.
Mark. Oh, that's funny, because in the alphabetical order, Mark, you would have been last.
So let me see, Mark, can you unmute yourself, please? I should get a request, otherwise I will try to find you in the long list.
I saw Mark earlier.
No, he's here. Can anybody from the candidates, please ask me to unmute them? Mark Stuckey, here he is. Hold on, ask to unmute.
There's a lot of pages here. Will he?
Mark, there you are. I can hear you, right? Beautiful. Thank you.
Where are you, Mark? I can hear you, Mark. I can't see you though. Maybe you're on one of these other pages here.
Good evening. Thank you for
Hey, you're beautiful.
Having this forum. My name is Mark Stuckey. I'm one of the seven candidates that's running. I am a product of the city of Mount Vernon. I was born here in the city of Mount Vernon. I went through all the schools here. My elementary school was the old Grimes School. Then I moved on to Washington, which is now Thornton. From Thornton, I went to A B Davis, then Nichols, then the high school. When I left the high school, I wind up working out in the per se, construction field for, for a while doing roofing. And then I came back and I started to work in the school district as a security officer. I started working at A B Davis for several years. And I love the job. I love working at A B Davis. I love being around the children and working and helping the staff. As time went moved on, I wind up leaving the district. And I wind up doing home repairs on my own. I ran on the school board and I was on the school board in 2013, 14 and 15. And within that time that I was on the board, I accomplished a lot. We lobbied Albany, Albany, and what I mean by we, the young people lobby Albany. And we brought a lot of money home. Since then, besides lobbying, I helped with the wellness program that Delia Ferguson put together. I wind up working on the buildings and ground aspect. On building and making stronger buildings and grounds. I wanted to do a lot of things within the district because I believe that if you live here, you should invest your time into the city, into your home. And I have always invested my time, my services. Even when I left off the board, I wind up going back to the board meetings, standing up, fighting and lobbying for the young people and staff here in the city of Mount Vernon. I also wind up being my year, my last year, probably 2015, if I'm not mistaken, we wind up putting the first zero percent tax increase on the taxpayers. So
Time is up.
What have I done?
Heads up.
I have done a lot within my time as a former board member.
All right. That's great, Mark. I appreciate it. You know, the other thing I want to point out is there's a good video out there for anyone interested in learning more about Mark. An interview that Delia Ferguson did with you. You can just go to like YouTube and Google Mark Stuckey. And that interview will come up, about a 30 minute interview. I think that that, I found that very helpful to learn about you. So I would encourage other people to do that as well. Next, let's pick another name out. Warren. Warren Mitchell. Little bit, just, you know, just, you know, really what I was looking
Let me just see real quick, Warren, can, I want to see if I can see you.
I can see him and I can ask him to unmute. He's right here. So I'm asking you, so you're unmuted, Warren. So just like, you know, where do you live in the city? How long have you been here? You go to schools here? You have kids here?
Absolutely.
A little bit like that.
So I am a lifelong resident of Mount Vernon. I am a product of the Mount Vernon school system. I went to Longfellow, which is now known as Rebecca Turner from elementary school. I went to A B Davis Middle School for seventh grade, Nichols for eighth, and then Mount Vernon High School for my high school years. I graduated, I went to college after that, and I went into finance, which is what I still am in now. I worked for a pharmaceutical company as their senior billing accountant and financial support. When I had children, the idea to put them in this school district was a no brainer. So I put my kids here. My kids all go to this school district. I have an 11 year old, a 14 year old, 17 and 18 year old. So four altogether. Yes, it gets colorful. Yes, it's hard to go on Zoom sometimes because everybody has something to say when dad's on Zoom, but it's okay. When my oldest were in elementary school, I was the PTA treasurer at their elementary school for one year. I was the president of the PTA for two years after that. And then roughly a year or two after that, I was, it was suggested to me to run for the school board. And I didn't know what school board was. And I ran and the people of Mount Vernon felt that I was worthy to represent them. And since then, that my job has been to serve them and serve our children, as well as the staff and the people who work in our district. And that's what I continue to do. And that's what I plan on doing. Regardless of whether I'm elected or not, I plan to still serve this community any way that I can.
Beautiful. Thanks so much, Warren. All right. Let's see who's next here. Diana Roya. Diana Roya, where are you at? There you are. I'm going to ask you to unmute and then you should be able to do, there you go. Sorry. Yeah, you're good.
I'm good. All right. Hi, everybody. My name, of course, is Diana Roya. I am a Mount Vernon resident. I have lived in Mount Vernon for roughly eight years now. My daughters, all three of my daughters attend Mount Vernon. I am the PTA president for Graham Elementary. My daughters, Amira and Madison, they both attend Graham. My oldest daughter, Nyla, she attends STEAM Academy. From there, I moved up to being the health and wellness chair for the PTA council. I am continuing my education and getting my master's degree in public administration. I am the director of community relations at an assistant living communities called Amber Court of Palom Gardens. And then from there, they promoted me and gave me the chairwoman for the National Aging in Place. Some of the reasons why I decided to join the election and be a part of this wonderful team is because I want to truly make a difference, not only for our community, but also for our children. I believe that children are always our future. And so what better way to make sure that our future is being taken care of by being part of this community and being part of the board? So that's one of the reasons why I decided to join and run for office.
Great. Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you. Let's see who's next here. Lorna. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Sure.
All right, there you go.
Okay.
How are you?
Good evening. Great. Good evening. Good evening, Mount Vernon. My name is Lorna Kerwin. I am a longstanding Mount Vernon resident. And I am a proud mother of a beautiful, intelligent teenage daughter. I have completed my undergrad degree in pre-law with a minor in finance. And I completed my master's degree at public administration at Pace University. I worked about 18 plus years in banking, working with large financial institution. I work in internal audit, finance, and as a crime, a federal, sorry, financial crime compliance officer overseeing 86 retail branches in a tri-state area. I have been in the trenches advocating for Mount Vernon School Community for a very long time. I proudly served on Mount Vernon PTA Council as a president for six years advocating for parents, students, teachers, and the community. Over those last six years, I have spearheaded fundraisers that raised over $100,000 in scholarships for Mount Vernon seniors and middle school students. I'm running for a school board trustee, which I would love to get on the board because I would like to restore the trust in the community, in the, in the school board. I would take my fiduciary responsibility in good faith and execute them and be loyal to the students, to the parents, and to the administration, also to the community that interested in me. I would love to join the board to do the right thing for the students. And I thank you.
Thank you, Lorna. That was great. Okay, next, let's see. Oh, I got two. We'll just, Mark, Mark Lency. I'm going to ask you to unmute and then you're good to go. There you go. Okay, there you are. For a second, it said only the host could unmute. Okay. Hi, my name is Mark Lency. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight and for being part of this debate. Good night. I thank you for the invite. My name is Mark Lency. I live in Mount Vernon. I have been a resident of Mount Vernon for 21 years. I live over on Hudson Boulevard, part of Chester Heights. My background is I was in law enforcement for 23 years in a local department. I was also in the United States Coast Guard as a facility inspector. And also my background for most of my life, since I was actually 12 and was illegal for me to do it, I have been in the rigging industry most of my life, which if you don't know what that is, it's heavy machinery and cranes. I am interested in running for school board because I think I have a very different background than the average person who runs for school board. But I would like to bring my background, especially in rigging and the trades to the vocational program in the high school because I feel it definitely needs a jumpstart and it needs to go in the right direction. Not just be a mediocre, but vocational training because we are right next door to New York City, which has, in the course of a long time, done quite well for me. And I believe we could do the same for the kids of this town. I've actually had this view for many years. That's in fact why I was asked by a few people if I would be interested in running. I also threw my contacts in law enforcement as a labor rep, came in contact with a lot of labor reps from the trades. And an important part of what I want to introduce here in that program is dovetailing it with the apprenticeship programs from organized labor. So out of high school, we can hopefully get some of these kids right into scale paying jobs with good benefits, keep them off the streets. That really is my main objective here. Men, a few words, that's that. That's it. No, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Down to two. Adrian Saunders. And then we'll, and then we'll go with Melissa. I'm going to ask you to unmute Adrian and then you're good to go. You're good.
Hi, good evening. My name's Adrian Saunders. I'm a lifelong resident of Mount Vernon, but I moved out of Mount Vernon for about eight years and I came back in 2005. And I went to all Mount Vernon schools. I'm not going to date myself. I have eight grandchildren, all in the school district. My oldest, all my children went through the Mount Vernon School District. And when I was, when I was, my children were in the school district. I have a daughter with special needs. And I got involved with the special ed PTA. And when I came back to Mount Vernon in 2005, I noticed that the special ed department was not what it was when I was involved with it. So I ran for the school board in 2012. I ran on the platform of vocational pre-K to eight and special ed. I've been on the board for nine years. We've made some accomplishments. But we also need to look at the violence in the school now, what's going on with social media. There's so much more that we have to do. So I'm asking the community to support me for one more term, another three years, to try to get some things done. Thank you.
Thank you. So you're what we would say, you have skin in the game here, right? You got a, you got a lot, you got a lot of skin in the game.
I have, I have eight grandchildren and I have a lot of nieces and nephews, cousins. I'm from here. I have a lot of family here. I know a lot of people that are concerned about what's going on. So I'm, I'm ready to do some work.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. And then the last in the intro will be Melissa Patterson.
Good?
Yeah, you're good.
Awesome. Um, I want to thank everyone for coming out. It's very cool to see everyone's faces, even though we're all back to the full square thing again. But my name is Melissa Patterson. I am a graduate of Mount Vernon Schools. I'm going to date myself now because I'm going to say I went to Lincoln and I went to Franco. And then I went to the high school. I graduated from the high school. I'm a longtime resident and a homeowner and a parent of two children that attend the district. I'm a licensed attorney in both New York and New Jersey. I have a number of different New York state licenses. I have my Juris Doctorate from Hostory University School of Law, my MBA from my own college in finance. I have my bachelor's in business administration from Concordia College. So my parents were very thrilled that I never left home. So I have been here the whole time. I can, I have in my numerous different jobs, I've worked in internal auditing. I was general counsel for a number of nonprofits in the Bronx. I'm in financial services now. The truth of the matter is, and I want to start with the fact that everybody on here who either wants to run or who has served is, it's a hard job. It's a non-paid volunteer. It's, and it's really, I want to give kudos to President Saunders, Vice President Mitchell, trustee Stuckey, I saw him around here somewhere, Lorna Kerwin, Mark Lency, Diana Roya, like this is, I give everybody a lot of credit because this is quite a job. Now, beyond the tangibles are the intangibles. And the truth of the matter is you have to be energetic to do this. You have to be driven to do this. And I'm, not only am I positive that I can do this, because I, now this is, this would be my second term if I was reelected. But the fact is that I know that we can get this done. We've made some really great strides in the last four years. We made great strides in the last, even then, what President Saunders said, the last nine years she's been on, we made great strides. Will there be moments where things happen? Absolutely. But the truth of the matter is, is we are not where we were and we're not going to be where we were today in three years, no matter who gets on. Um, so yes, I think I'm good for now.
Excellent. Thank you.
Chris, if I may for one second, I just want to give everybody heads up. We are doing this kind of as Homeless Association or nonprofit basis, which means we just busted out of our max audience number. There are some people are trying to get in. I apologize. But this is a grassroots endeavor and we do not have high flying enterprise subscription. It also only hits people who are coming in late. So that's the little revenge for that. No panic. We are recording all of this and we will share the link widely. So if there's anybody who feel they're missing out, we apologize. They can take, they can, can partake life, but they will have an opportunity to use. Take it away, Chris.
That's good news. We, we hit, what is that, 100 people you're allowed?
100 people, yes.
Okay. So listen, what we're going to do now, I'm, we're going to, we're going to switch and talk about those audits. Because that, that's been, that information has been sort of bouncing around on the 2018 audit and the one that was just released. So I think it behooves us to talk about that. So what I'm going to do, this will be a little bit more back and forth because there are just going to be a few simple questions. You know, kind of yes or no things that I'll, that I'll ask you, you know, but I'm going to read a little bit of a preamble. And then I'll pick and then we'll, we'll go from there. Okay? So as all of you know, financial oversight is a bedrock responsibility of a school board trustee. In April of this year, the Office of State Controller released an audit regarding the school district's procurement of natural gas practices from July 2011 to June 2018. And according to that OSC report, the school district practices were not in compliance with general municipal law. And the school district may have overpaid around $900,000 for natural gas. The audit is a follow up to an OSC audit released in 2018 that covered the period of July 2015 to April 2017. That audit revealed compliance issues with respect to competitive bidding practices, the unauthorized access and overriding of the purchasing approval process and claims auditing practices. So now I'm going to pick a name and then based on that, I'm just going to ask a few questions. Let me put these back in the hat. Didn't put them back in here. I'm going to ask just a few questions about that. Yeah. And we've got Diana Roya. So Diane, you're here. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Okay.
Question.
Here we go. So I'm going to ask you a few questions. The first question is, have you read these audits? Have you read the 2018 audit and the one that was just released in April?
Unfortunately, I did not read the one in April. But
You, you read the, the one that had to do with the compliance issues with competitive bidding, unauthorized access of the purchasing approval process, claims auditing. You read that one?
No, I wasn't able to read those as of yet. But that is something that is on my to do list to read.
Okay. So then for you, what we're going to do is skip a little bit and just go and speak more generally. Since you, since you haven't read those and some of the questions were, were very specific. But just sort of as a, as a trustee, talk a little bit about, you know, you understand the basis of the audit that people were out of compliance with, with best practice and financial oversight. What are some of your ideas about reducing financial waste, fraud and abuse? Or what kind of oversight practices do you, do you think you would want to participate in to ensure the money is spent wisely?
I, so from what I gather by all of this is just basically making sure that with the audits that we're all on one accord and paying attention to what is actually going on. I know that there has been some hiccups where there are a few people that may not be qualified enough to do the audits. However, looking for the right kind of people that are educated enough to explain what's really going on with the audits and explain how we can divide the money appropriately would be something that is important for us to all look into.
Good. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. So I'm going to ask, pick another name from the hat. All right. Mark Lency. So Mark, I'm going to ask you, let me ask you to unmute.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the same thing, the first question to get it going is, have you read these audits?
Yes. I read they go.
And do you agree with the Office of State Controller findings in these audits?
Based upon the reports, I do agree with the state controller's findings. Just to say, being from a world that I spent a lot of time in Albany because of, because of being involved with labor unions and a lot of issues that I've dealt with, with the OSC, I will also say they're a political machine. Therefore, I never can tell if everything they say is entirely accurate.
Got it. Well, remember Alan, I don't know if anyone knows Alan Hevesey. Anyone remember that name before?
Yes.
Napoli, that, that he flamed out. Okay. So you read them. That's good. You accept them with that caveat about it's a political body. Did you read the corrective action plans? Because there are corrective action plans. I know there was some information floating out there that there was not, but there are corrective action plans that the board signed off on. So are you, did you read those corrective action plans?
I did read, I mostly read, most recently, the superintendent's response to the gas audit.
Got it. Got it. And, and what did you think of that response? Do you think that was a reasonable response or would you have added anything to it or?
After reviewing such things in the course of my career as a PVA president, I'll say it was prepared by an attorney. And it was just making excuses.
So, so that was the basis of the corrective action plan. So do you think the corrective action plan would be flawed?
I would go with it's probably flawed.
Okay. All right. The next, so what would you do differently then? Like, well, you know, based on your knowledge of these reports and, and, and you know, what they contain, do you, would you say, ah, I would have done, this would have been best practice or I'd do it a little bit differently? What are your thoughts about that?
Well, obviously, the, the practices that we've had for many years weren't consistent with the general municipal law. My thoughts on how to, I should stop back a second. Do you want my thoughts on how to fix it or what they should have done?
Well, yeah, what, you know, what would you do differently?
I guess my idea here, if I were a trustee and had the authority to or come up with ideas.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would have, I, I, I I would have, I, I, I believe the school system, especially seeing that so much money can be wasted. I mean, almost a million dollars on the gas was wasted according to the uh OSC's report. If that's the case, then it definitely uh would be in our interest to I, for the district to either hire a dedicated analyst whose job is to oversee all of the purchasing, whether it be gas or any other commodity that we may buy that has a fluctuating price to have them, have them as an analyst, have them as a responsible party, which is just a term I I don't know if anybody goes by that, but it's a term used uh in I would guess in Code of Federal Regulations, uh, responsible party to oversee the purchasing. The person's job would be contingent upon their performance. So if they don't, if we look at what they're doing and they're not coming up with the proper plans and coming up with the right uh analysis of what should be purchased, how it should be purchased and the price it should be purchased, we find someone new. If uh, just to finish that, because I'm, I'm not out there in the business world, I am sure, or excuse me, out there in the school business world, I'm sure there's a, a consulting company out there that does exactly that and probably works off of uh uh commission on, based upon what they save you. If they, if that exists, then I would go with that as well. That would be my plan for fixing that.
Thank you, thank you, let's go to the next name. Adrian Saunders, so I'm going to ask you to unmute. So you get the, you get the sequence, what I'm going for here, so you've read the audits, you know the corrective action plans because you've obviously seen them, been a part of, of them. What are your, what are your thoughts? You're, you've got deep and, you know, knowledge about this.
Well, um, thank you for asking the question, I think um I may be the one that brought this to the table. Um, by saying vote no for the budget because we need to do audits. Because the same things happened before. You know, if you're looking at the previous audit and you're looking at this audit, this money could have been spent on our children. This could have been, this money could have been spent on helping educate our children. So I've asked for audits in the school district for, since I've been on the, since I've been on the board for the last nine years. I've asked for independent orders, I've asked for forensic audits and I haven't gotten them. So I um, I would behoove the board members, whoever gets on and, and asked the, the new superintendent that we need to do an audit, we need to do, to do an audit on facilities. Because I, um, we're told that there are vendors that don't exist. And we need to do an audit on special ed. We need to do an audit on the procurement practices, the purchasing practices and payroll. So that's all I have to say.
Got it, let me just ask you, what about the independent auditors you guys have? You know, um, the same auditing firm works for the city and the school district. What are your, what, what about those audits? Because I read those and I was surprised to see, as you probably were, they didn't mention.
They did not mention it, so if they, um, I don't want to say, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how long it takes them to do their audits, but I would think that they would have found something that is a, that's a red flag that they needed to let the, the district know. And the audit that was back from 2017 or whatever, that first audit, I believe the purchasing agent got taken out in handcuffs. You know, it was just so bad, so you know, we need to tighten up our practices.
Gotcha, thank you, thank you, all right, let's go to the next. Mr. Stucky. I think you, let me see if you're still on this page here. Might have to, I might have to hunt you down, I don't see, you're not on the front page, let's go to the next page. Go to this page, where'd you go?
I'm going to allow him to unmute himself, Mark Stucky can unmute yourself.
I can't find him.
Somebody told me earlier that he uh got kicked out, but I readmitted him.
What if he was over the limit? Oh, you're over.
Uh, I just upgraded it, we can have 300 people right now, we're doing it as we speak.
Well, there's Mark, all right, I got you, Mark.
Beautiful.
I just asked you to unmute. Um, how you doing, Mark?
Hi, I'm glad I got back in, I got kicked off.
Good, it's good to see you, glad you made it back. So we're talking about the audits, the first thing I need to know is, did you, have you read the audit? Did you?
No, I have not, I have not read the orders, but I will, I would go straight into as far as the audits wind up taking practice. Uh, I'm going to go back into history real quick, um, when Brenda Smith was here. When Brenda Smith was here, she left us in the black with a surplus to where um the money was for the, the uh teachers and security and the CSCA negotiations. And when she left the office, I mean, we was totally in the black. Uh, what took place was when in that new administration came in, they wind up saying that Brenda Smith left us in the hole, in the red, okay? And then that's when they started saying that we had to, you know, there would be no sports for the young people and they started uh going out into the streets, collecting funds to wind up having sports in Mount Vernon. Um, now with the, with that audit, they wind up saying that, you know, uh, they didn't find anything. But this is what took place at that time. The money that Brenda Smith left here for us wind up being cut up, moved around, so whoever came in to do the audit did not see it. Now, don't forget, they're looking for certain things within an audit. They're not going to go into a deep search as such as a forensic audit, you know, to find what's going on. It's, it's just a, a, a surface check to see how the money is being spent and how uh the bills are being paid and so forth. So with that said, anytime they wind up coming into the district, you will hear the same thing, we haven't found anything wrong. But if they take the time and the board winds up pushing it, then they could wind up finding things that are, are missing, funds that have been misplaced. Now, I heard someone talked about the um uh purchasing of, of different things. Well, we have a big problem with purchasing and the, the way, let me put it like this. If you purchase something, you can steal more money because nobody's going to know how you're purchasing. You can say, I'm purchasing a, uh, we're going to use wax for the floors, wax for the floors and you could buy for $45, but bill the district for $100. So now what winds up happening, you're skimming off the top. Yes, in 2017, someone was arrested and taken out in handcuffs. This is should have been done earlier. Because when we had a individual who was supposed to be the superintendent of buildings and grounds and that individual couldn't pass the test for buildings and grounds and they had to change the, the titles for that, the board did not do their job for the taxpayers. The board did not do their, their due diligence input in protecting the taxpayers. Now, if I'm elected, I'm going to do what I did before. I'm going to hold everyone accountable who's doing wrong. Because the first one that comes first is that taxpayers, without the taxpayers, there's no education for our children. So now what happens? Our children winds up being out in the street and they're lost, they already lost two years because of this pandemic. We cannot afford to keep going behind the eight ball.
Thank you, Mark, I appreciate that. Um, all right, I'm going to go to the next person here. Melissa Patterson, I'm going to unmute you. And then, you know, the, the same thing, start with, did you read the audits?
I did.
And did you agree with the OSC findings?
I don't disagree with them. Um, I, 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 I really look at audits a different way, I think. I tend to enjoy audits, I like when somebody who has a specialty comes in and can look at our systems and tell us where we have faults. Because the fact is that no one is perfect, no system is perfect. People don't apply it perfectly, even if you have the perfect processes and procedures. So I, I, I know it sounds silly, but I enjoy audits, I like people to come in and I like people to strengthen our systems.
And what did you think of the corrective action plans?
Um, well, you know, it's interesting, I don't necessarily, I think there are facts, the way that the state writes these audits, they control the way the facts are presented. And that's not always necessarily the facts. And I think somebody had mentioned, I think Mark Lindsay had mentioned that the state controls the way that they write it and sometimes it's political, sometimes if you waste the money to send somebody into Mount Vernon to do an audit, you have to find something. You must.
Right, but you control, you guys control the corrective action plan, certainly you're, you're, you're responding to the findings and their recommendations.
Correct, but there's only so much arguing you could do with the state. The state is the hammer-pound gorilla and there is no conversation. So when you look at, like, if you looked at the corrective action plan for the gas, um, what does it say? It says that we're going to join the state's program, great for us, why didn't we join? So one of the reasons we couldn't join when we met, when, well, at least, again, this is just for the record, this predated me, so this is just based on what I can piece together. But what happened is, it seems that we were unable to join at some point because we had switched from gas boilers or from oil boilers to gas boilers and to join the state purchasing agreement, you need to know your usage. If you don't know your usage, you can't join the system. So to write up this school district or to not even address that, to say, hey, listen, I know you couldn't join at the point that you said you wanted to join, or something to that effect, is just kind of, again, I think you're talking about, you know, scoring.
I understand, I didn't see any mention of that in the, in the actual response from the school district.
Because there's a, there's a number of back and forths that go back before, that are unofficial responses.
You know, I'm, I'm familiar with the process, but in that, that certainly, certainly, you're, the district is allowed to write whatever they want in their, in their response, so if that was a factor, I would have thought to see that, but let's move, let's move on. So, you know, knowing what you know about this, are there steps that you, were things that you would do differently to try and safeguard the finances?
Oh, absolutely, I think there's, so I, I'm key on documentation. I am key on records, retention, processes, procedures, everything in writing, everything there. You have a question, go to the notebook, you have a question, go to the binder, go pull it out, go look what it says. Because I think as long as, and again, that's not to say policies and procedures don't need to be updated, that's not to say that they don't need, you know, attention, but when you have the policies and procedures there, the likelihood of these things falling through the cracks, likelihood of having these kinds of issues almost goes down to nil.
Right, it's like a pilot, a pilot doesn't do anything without going to their manual, that they
Correct.
It's essential, right, you don't want your, your pilot to be creative and you don't want your, your financial people handling money to be creative, you want them to follow, follow the, follow the playbook, so.
But I also want that system to be set, so if there's a new person that comes in, nobody has any assumptions, which seems to be another issue with that, with that particular gas audit. Staff changed, people assumed the other person who was there did it at some point, they assumed the paperwork was on file. There were a lot of assumptions there that ultimately, again, if you don't have it there in, in your hand, you can't make those assumptions.
Got it, all right, thank you, let me pick the next person out here. Warren Mitchell, and you're going to get the benefit of a, of another question from me related to this, um, which you may not be able to answer, I don't, I don't know. But so, same idea, right? That you read the audits, I take it, and you read the corrective action plans, what are, give me your, you know, 30-second thoughts on that.
So let's just be straightforward that this audit was for the period of 2011 through 18, so I was not on the board at the time.
Right.
That's for starters, I also am well aware that the million dollars lost was not spent or squandered, it had to do with the inability to dictate to the state how much gas we were going to use on new boilers that we had never had before. Um, when I, I did read through the audit, I've been through Sarbanes-Oxley audits, which is SEC, so I do understand how they work. I am a documentation person as well, I look at the scopes, I look at the retainer, I look at the client agreement, that's what, that's all I go by. You don't refer to that, then you're referring to creativity and that's not what we want. No forensic accounting should be needed. So when I read the corrective action plan, it's not for you to present whether you like it or not, it's whether you feel it's going to be effective. We instilled that, we implemented the corrective action plan June of 2018. So at this point, we have been requesting facilities audits and we were recently just updated that they're done. So it was some timing and there was a lot of different information to pull together because we had changes in staff and things like that. So the facilities audit is done and we were made aware of that just recently, almost probably in the last week or so.
Right.
Um, so.
So I'm going to ask you just one more follow-up, um, and you know, you, you may not be able to answer, but it's been on my mind. Uh, you know, it's a little bit technical, but you know, this, the ESCO, the Energy Services Company, right? That's what this natural gas was about, it's that, you know, some, sometime, a couple decades ago, 2005, I think it was, someone made an agreement when the markets opened up and they decided to go with this Energy Services Company instead of ConEd to supply the natural gas, not entirely, but, but for many of the schools. Billing still goes through ConEd. So if you look at all, all of the claims warrants, I did, I went through them all to try and find out who's this, who's this ESCO, right? Um, you can't find it because all the bills, and that's part of the reason why I think the district had a hard time of picking up on this, you would have to be very price sensitive to know that this was happening, because the billing, you still pay the bills to ConEd. This, the, the district signed a, an agreement with this, with this ESCO, right? Um, where the ESCO paid the district $158,000 in exchange for a release from liability. Um, this to me smacks like what happened in the financial crisis of 2008, right? Where Goldman Sachs gets to pay $500 million, they don't admit wrongdoing, but they still came out with a net profit of $8 billion, right? So I want to know who this ESCO is, because we could have neighbors out there who sign agreements and are overpaying for natural gas when they shouldn't be. So, you know, I understand the district signed this agreement, but we have a right to know who this ESCO is because this, this affects us, we, we pay for this, so I want to know if you guys can tell us who this ESCO was, name this company.
So my understanding is, the ESCO is, i- i- it's a they're an energy supply company, okay? And what their purpose is, we went into a contract, a written contract with them for the procurement of natural gas. Now, we did that because going from oil to gas was going to save lots of money, okay? And what the, what ESCO, what the ESCO contract do was say, hey, I'm going to sign a contract with you to get my services, but I won't go to some other person who comes out of nowhere with a cheaper price and just leave this, leave you high and dry. So as far as what ESCO is, if I had to define it.
No, no, I wanted to know the actual name, is it Chris and Sue's Gas Company? Is it, you know, Pete and Bob sell you gas? What's the name of this? Because my understanding of these operations, I've had them pitch me, I've had them show up at my door and say, hey, switch to us, we'll save you money on your ConEd bill. And I'm like, yeah, I think that sounds unlikely, someone in the school district didn't think it sounded unlikely and they took the bait. Right, they didn't sign anything and here we are, overpaying 40% for our natural gas. But I want to move on, I know it's a delicate issue because you, you guys signed a confidential settlement agreement with them. I just wanted to see, I'm, I'm not going to put you on the spot here, but I'm going to still push.
I'll just say.
Get the name of that company.
I, I'll say this, while I can't tell you the exact breakdown of the acronym, they are a middleman. They have the ability to sell us natural gas.
Yeah, well, I, well, I, I, I'm going to still find out who that was.
Absolutely.
So, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to, let's move on, thank you, thank you, I didn't mean to put you, press you too hard, it's a delicate topic. Lorna. Lorna, you get to follow that.
Hi.
Hi, how are you? So first, did you, did you read these audits?
So I did, I read the last one, the one that just came out, I, I kind of skimmed through the first one.
Yeah, what are your, what are your thoughts, I mean, on the findings and?
So as everyone says, you know, it's, it's for the state, the state comes in, they have to make their, their, their um finance, right? It's, it's part of their job. Um, what I, I, and I do agree with the finance based on, on, and what they are. Um, however, um, I know the business office put out um correction actions that there will be taken. And I, and I do think that it, it should be carried out as soon as possible, so the, the, the district will be back in compliance um with the state. Um.
Got it.
So, I, I, I mean, also, I, I mean, to, to, just to safeguard um all the, the, the finance that I should say, before the state comes in, I do think that we should have external auditors, independent external auditors, that they would, you know, catch these findings before the state comes in.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so it could be corrected.
Yeah. Well, you'll be happy here that they do. They're, the school district is required to have an independent audit. I don't know if it's annually or is it every two years? Does somebody know Adrian, Warren, Melissa just hold up fingers? I thought it was annual, every year. So, so basically they're under siege from an independent auditing firm for probably half of the year. They're doing that, but that, you know, that obviously that doesn't catch everything, but.
But this was, right, these findings were not identified, right? So if they were identified, it could have been corrected before the state comes in.
Got it.
And that would have, yeah.
So is that something you're interested in doing? Like sort of really digging into look for patterns, spending patterns? Ask questions?
Definitely. Ask questions, look at, um, spending patterns, see what we're identifying, make sure we don't make the same mistakes with, um, the findings, you know, just to correct, um, and to be, you know, have safeguard and to be in compliance at all times.
Gotcha. Great.
I'm a.
Sorry about that. Hold on, wait, I, I'm going to ask you, I'm mute. You weren't, I thought you were finished. Go ahead, finish, finish your thought.
I was saying that I'm a compliance, I'm a compliance, um, person with policy and procedures. So I, I do follow policy and procedures. So I, you know, adhere to, to all the policies.
Got it. Excellent. Thank you. Um, is that it? Yeah, yeah. We went through all seven. Good. Okay. So that was the longest. That's, we got over that hump. We start, we'll start moving towards a gentler, a gentler time. We have another, we do have another tou- tough one, I think, a tough issue to deal with here. Um, and that is school safety. Um, you know, violence is at an all time high. Um, nationally, um, everyone is struggling coming after two years of social isolation um, and an uptick in, in substance abuse. And really no, no area of society has gone untouched by that. So, you know, one of the things I think in Mount Vernon, we need to be sensitive to is it's a majority black school district. And there is historically and currently tension, the potential for tension between law enforcement and young, young black men. And, you know, that worries me. If we, if, if the solution is that we go to a heavy law enforcement or a school resource officer, I'm not saying that may not be, that might be part of the solution. But if we go too far in that direction, that can have negative consequences on the ability of our children to learn. So I think there's kind of a Goldilocks sweet spot that has to be struck between, you know, the presence of law enforcement in schools and, and the ability of our students to feel comfortable and stress fee, stress fee, so that, stress fee, so they can, so they can learn. So that's kind of, I want to know how you strike that balance. Like what are the effective elements of your vision for a security plan? And how do you strike that balance? So kids don't feel like it's a police state, that they feel that they're safe and secure and able to learn, but not, not tense. Um, the first person I picked out of the hat to answer this is Warren. I'm sorry, Mitch. Mitch.
Okay, yes, that's cool. Um, so school safety. I just want to, let's just take one half a step back and make sure we understand what a board trustee does. We're, we actually police the superintendent. We don't service him. We don't, you know, we, we basically make, make sure that he holds people accountable because we're holding him accountable or she accountable. That's it. So speaking of school safety, let's talk about that. You talked about a police state. We learned from, and I'm going to age myself, we learned from the Ronald Reagan years that the law and order initiative did not work. It didn't work for the people who law and order initiative was inflicted on, but it didn't work. Okay. It was actually, it was, it was, had a, had a dark undertone. We had, we lost our SROs, which were our actual police officers in our schools. We lost them. We didn't choose to say, hey, we don't want them anywhere. No, we, they were, they were taken from us. Okay? We just this year have gotten to the point to, and we're at the point where we're finalizing the contracts to bring only a handful back in that the district is paying for out of pocket 100%, okay? Um, that's neither here nor there, but we are already under, we well past understood the point of the SRV. Kids need a safe space. They need a place of peace when they come to school. We, we know that the pandemic caused a lot of turmoil. Self-control became even more of an issue than it was before the pandemic because we cannot deny the fact that self-control of our babies had, is something that they have to be accountable for all their life. We would have these issues beforehand. So mental health, emotional health, all of these are congealed together by that safety. So when we find out way before, the idea is that superintendents are doing the jobs of the people in the cabinet. Not the case. You're in the cabinet to do your job because you're, you're here to do your job. If you're not doing your job, once we find out, we're going to the superintendent who holds you accountable.
Got it. Got it. Thank you. All right. Let's go to the next one. Adrian.
Hi. So as far as safety is concerned, um, we are, like Ms. Mitchell said, we are paying for an SRO. And as you mentioned, um, kids have a problem with seeing police in the building a lot. So we need to, um, review our discipline code. We need to review our, um, restorative action plan. We need to figure out how we can get children to mediate their differences. Uh, we have a handful of kids that are repeat, I don't want to say offenders, but that are, um, struggling with their, um, what is it? They're struggling with their credits. So those big, maybe about 25, 30 kids, uh, we're going to send those students to BOCs and they're going to do a, um, a vocational program at BOCs in some academics. Um, so that's that. And then we, we made a mistake of closing the Mandela School uh, years ago because that's where some of the kids went, um, that had some issues with, I guess, big buildings. So, um, but that's no, neither here or there. So, um, we're sending a handful of kids, maybe 25 to 30. We're working that out right now. Uh, we are going to do a restorative action plan. Uh, we need to tighten up our discipline code and, um, and that's that, you know, we just want to see where we're going from there. I think once we get a handful out, we can assess that. We have a new security company that's going to start, um, that taking data somewhere around next week on the 18th. They're going to start taking data on what kids, how many kids there are, uh, what kids are doing, what? They're going to monitor social media because a lot of times, uh, it starts with social media. And, um, and we'll, we'll take it from there. So we, we just starting to turn, you know, we just got this, our new acting superintendent last week and she is already starting to turn, um, the ship into what we can see, maybe we can see something better coming. So, uh, so we have that coming next week.
Thank you. Next. Mark Lancy. Where'd you go, Mark?
Might be over on the next screen. Axel, you see, uh?
He, he must have lost connection, but I re-admitted him. Um, and he can unmute himself if he's, if he's on here. Let me check real quick.
All right. Well, in the meantime.
I'm asking him to unmute right now. He is in the meeting.
There he is. All right. Your turn. Sorry about that. Security plan, sir.
Okay. Well, similar to what Adrian just said. First, first and foremost, as far as the security goes in the school district, obviously people can see from things on Facebook and, uh, videos that are out there, that the high school is a major issue. Uh, I believe the high school has gone downhill in recent times, mostly as Adrian pointed out, that when they closed Mandela, they moved all the kids together. Uh, and, you know, just being from a law enforcement background and studying such things, usually in any large group, there's a small group of, uh, individuals that stir things up and create trouble, whether that you're allowed to say that anymore. Um, so the primary, a, a primary part of any security plan would be to separate the kids who really are the problematic children who create the trouble over and over. Separated them into a separate facility. As she said, they're going to use BOCs, which is an excellent, uh, way of, uh, training them. By doing that, it's going to provide the other students a better opportunity at education. It also gives the kids who go to the other facility a better opportunity at guidance and education, especially the guidance, because, you know, they could certainly use that. Uh, as far as district wide, as far as the safety and security, uh, as I had post, as I had sent you guys prior, uh, we need to revamp probably the whole, the whole system. Uh, Adrian had said they're bringing in a new, uh, security consulting firm, which I think is an excellent idea because I don't feel that, uh, the old, uh, firm had too great of a plan. Any, any new plan should incorporate school resource officers. I believe they should be under the direct supervision. I know people don't care for law enforcement in this situation, but any school resource officer should be under the direct supervision of a supervisor from the department, the local, the Mount Vernon department. The reason for that is because you need to be able to have communication between what goes on in the school and what goes on on the street. Because as you had in the situ, the situation most recently, uh, at the parade, that's, it was a very preventable, uh, situation. I'm not a security consultant, but I can poke 10 different holes in what happened that day that could have prevented that, that, uh, situation. One of the most important things is social media monitoring. So any, uh, any firm, whether, or whether we do it ourselves, I don't know how to do it ourselves, but I know firms who do it, uh, has to involve social media monitoring. I have friends who are directors of security for large facilities, meaning malls, uh, school systems, and they all have, uh, a security mon, uh, a social media, social media monitoring company that actually pings their phone every time their facility is mentioned in social media. It's a fantastic.
Thank you.
You got it.
I think that's good. Got it. I think this new, um, company that, uh, Adrian Saunders mentioned has that social media monitoring component to it. Um, okay, next. Grab another card here. Melissa Patterson.
Um, I'm going to start a different way with this answer. I'm, I'm assuming you're wanting me to answer the same question everyone else answered.
Yeah, you know, you know, your plan for improving.
Okay. So if you want to.
Safety welfare.
So there's two answers. So one, you can look at the questionnaire I filled out. That deals with much more of the building model. I think, and one thing I haven't heard yet, and I really want to draw it out with everybody is, and, and the terminology I use, and I'm going to explain it, is unsilo. We need to unsilo ourselves and, and really break the silos down and really see, because the only way that we're going to effectively change the violence in our community is to work together. So for example, we have, I've spoken to the city a number of times about how can we partner? We have our parent resource center and our parent resource center is starting parent classes. So those parent classes are going to provide parents with opportunities and we're restoring parents as partners, which is another program that we have. And we really need to, I absolutely agree. I think I heard restorative action earlier. That's great. There's a youth court that Mount Vernon has now that we should be utilizing. You know, the truth of the matter is this, we don't have to be the architects of all of the programs that affect our children or that our children go to. We should be partnering with the neighborhood communities. For example, I was at YCOP last weekend and they had something like 60 kids in the building. That's 60 kids that they brought in the building. If they had more access to our buildings, they could run more programs. The Boys and Girls Club has a fantastic program. We have an opportunity here and it's funny, was it Christmas, two and a half years ago, um, we kidnapped the, well, I might have kidnapped the Christmas event. Um, because the reality is our kids need to be heard and our kids need to be treated like they're kids. They're not, we cannot police date our kids. We can't, none of that. And, and I'm sorry, and I'm going to go over for one second, but what we ended up doing for the Christmas event is we moved the Christmas event. We took all the adult participation out. We had the kids singing and dancing. The kids had arts and crafts. I'm not going to point you fingers, but somebody on the Zoom had to dress like Santa Claus and he might have gotten bum rushed. It was very fantastic, but we had more participation in that one event than we had in any other event that year. Because we treated the kids like they were kids. Our elementary school kids need just as much attention right now as our high school kids do. Everybody needs the social and emotional learning, but we need to hit them across the board.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. Next. Diane Alroya. Spot you somewhere up here. I don't know where Diane is. Axel, do you see Diane somewhere?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
Are you here?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Um, so when it comes down to safety, this is like something really near and dear for me. Um, back in high school, my ex-boyfriend was murdered on his way to school. Um, so when I look at certain aspects of when it comes down to violence in the school, um, I don't look at it as we need to police our children. Um, I do feel like for years we have dealt with our children where they are seen and not heard. And for years we've, we need to break that generational curse. Um, children need to be seen. They also need to be heard. They need to express themselves because keeping them locked in and not being able to express themselves, this is where mental health comes in. Where children, uh, suffer from depression. They suffer from anxiety. Um, they suffer from a whole lot of issues, mental health issues. And because of the fact that we're not utilizing our support in making sure that they are being seen and heard. Um, so when looking at what happened with all the other children, when we look at how they express themselves in social media, um, I come from an era where we've used social media to, to have that conversation. I've come in an era where, um, we used our fists and not so much with knives and guns and things like that. Um, I've come to also to an era where we actually sit down together and mediate the situation and have a conversation as children, yet also as adults. We're educating our children to know how to express themselves in a positive way. And so I feel like policing them, using the SROs. Um, you might look at it where you're saying, well, you know, there's the stigma between the police department and our children, but I feel like if we can channel a different light on how the police department, the SROs that are coming inside the schools, building a relationship with our children and having that conversation with our children. I don't really believe that that would be something where they'll have that stigma of, oh, I see a police officer and I don't want to go over there, or I don't want to have that conversation with a police officer. But I really do see in the past, when there were, um, SROs in the building, there were students that really gravitated towards a lot of the police officers that were inside the schools. So I truly do believe that we need that bond and that relationship for us to open up and have that conversation. Stop closing out our children and letting them express themselves.
Nice. I see. So it's like, you see it as an opportunity to, to foster better understanding, which is nice. I like that. Thank you. Okay. Two more. Mr. Stucky. You around, Mark? This is a great turnout. Um, I gotta say, it's, um, it's very edifying to see so many people take such interest to come out and sit through this. Um, you're, you there, Mark?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Thank you. So you, so you get the gist of what we're doing here?
Needs, needs, needs. Our children needs, need, needs. Um, one of the things I say that we need is a active community center here in the Mount Vernon. We have a community center, adult center, but it's not active. And with an active center, that would help the young people to come in and talk. Everyone is hearing what they're saying, but they're not acting on what their needs are. SROs, I believe that we should have SRO officers in our buildings. And the reason why is the communication that winds up taking place with the, the SRO officer and the child. Some people want to say, you know, you're policing. No. They hear, they're here in Mount Vernon. A lot of them, well, I wouldn't say a lot, quite a few of them, those officers live here in Mount Vernon. And they have a communication taking place already with those students. So by having the SRO offices, what we used to have in the past here, it will work. It's just the mindset of certain individuals who will wind up screaming out, you're policing our children, you're having cops in our buildings and it's not safe, you know, we, we were looking at a safety part, but not with cops. Time has changed. And if we're going to protect the children, if we're going to protect staff, we have to step, step it up a notch. And that's not being from the, the old days as they wind up saying, old money is out of circulation, new money is in. Well, the same way we have a lot of new wealthy young people is the same way we have to change. We have to change. Now we look outside of different other districts on what they're doing. Go into New York City, look and see what they're doing. They already invented the will. Yes, we have to tweak it a little bit to make it work for us. But why take something that's not invented and try to make it from scratch? When you're going to throw a lot of money out the window? You know, the whole problem is to be, to save our young people, have them into a safe environment. And at the same time, save our taxpayers a lot of money. Because no matter which way you slice this pie, it's about that taxpayer. And how are we going to, as a board member, how are you going to protect the taxpayers? Cause they put, they're the ones who go out and vote to put you in office because they are hoping and, and praying that you would do the job that, you know, they're putting you in for. And we, we all have to realize when people come, forgive me for being passionate, but when people come in.
Just want to keep, keep things moving. So please wrap it up if you can, Mark.
When people come in to do a service, at the end of the day, they'll talk a great game, but at the end of the day, they'll change the agenda from what they were supposed to do to doing something else.
Good point. That, thank you. I know, I appreciate it. It's good passion. I like it. Um, and I think, Lorna, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna back clean up on this round.
So I just unmute myself. Yes. So I do agree with everyone that, um, we should, should bring back the resource officers back into the buildings. It did work when the resource officers were there. So I would, um, encourage the administration and the board to partner with the city to hire back the resource officers into the school, um, buildings. Because they, the, the source officers, they build bonds with the kids. They, 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 they are friendly with the kids. And if their kids are getting out of, of order, they would, they know how to deal with them, where to meet them. I would also work with the administration, um, to build out the discipline code framework in the district, right? And, um, also to implement bullying prevention training for the staff, um, for parents and for the students. Um, I would push a campaign with the PTA, with the school PTAs, all the schools have PTAs to encourage parents to monitor their, their, their kids on social media accounts. Because most of the conflict starts at social, with social media. Um, I would also work with, with the administration and the board to stim- stimulate respectful trust and care and relationship with the students. Have that open communication with the students. Let them feel comfortable coming to ask for help. And so even if they hear something that their peers are saying that's either derogatory, either towards another students, have that, have them the peer, they have them to come in and talk to them, have that open line. So they're not afraid to reach out to the administrators. So those are things that I would foster. Just, just have a conversation with the kids. They want to be heard. This generation are different than when we were growing up. So I, I would just, you know, encourage the board and the administration to have these in place for the kids. So we can meet the kids, uh, um, uh, at their, at their, at least halfway. And also encourage the parents, have the parents partner with the school district, have the parents partner with that administration in the schools. That's usually how we, we work.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We're, we're a little behind schedule, but everyone seems to be doing okay. This one, this next question, um, is going to challenge you to think a little bit about the financing component of it. So you know, based on New York State Education Department measures and probably broader measures as well, our schools perform below average in terms of outcomes for students. About three in 10 uh, of our high school students won't graduate in four years. Um, that's a problem. Yet our per pupil spending runs close to 20% above state average. So we're spending a lot of money. Um, and we're not achieving powerful outcomes for, for our children. Um, so really the challenge then is how do you help guide the district? So that performance improves without, uh, breaking the bank, right? So you've got to improve performance and control costs at the same time. Obviously you're not going to be able to cut taxes. I know that's been floating around. It's it's just, it's just a non-starter to cut taxes, but contain cost growth, right? Keep it, keep it, uh, contained. And I think a lot more people will, will swallow, you know, marginal increases if, if we feel the impact in the future of our students. So that's your question. Improve, improve our results for our kids and control costs. How do you, how do you, how do you do those things? Let's pick a person out of here. Lorna. You're going to get to start. There you go. How do you do it, Lorna?
So how I would do it is that I would work with the administration and the board to develop a high level vigorous curriculum, curriculum framework for elementary, middle school and high school that is mandated across the district. As it is now, there are, there is not, uh, a curriculum that each school follows. Teachers have to go out and get their own curriculum. So that's, that's the first thing for us, for the students to follow and to achieve across the district. So they will be on path for graduation and on path beyond, um, for college and for successful careers. I think it starts with a curriculum for the kids a- across the board. And it has to be challenging for each child to reach their potential.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next. Mr. Stucky. Could be that I just threw these in and we're going in reverse order, but that's okay. I got you, Mark. So how do you, how do you control costs and improve performance?
Well, the way you can control costs is simple. Monitor, watch and read. Read everything that comes to your hands on what they're trying to throw at you. Because if you're not reading, things are going to, uh, go underneath the door as what, um, Ms. Saunders says. There was different, um, vendors that doesn't exist. So, uh, re-watch, ask questions. Not only that, but I'm gonna back this up real quick, but if you recall, Mount Vernon had a problem with the swimming pools and we had got funding to get that. Gary Brettlow came in, got the money for us to do what we need to do for the swim pools. He's a person who has always watched over Mount Vernon. We cannot afford to lose Gary Brettlow, not now. Okay, so I'm quite sure we can get, uh, he can try to help us get the funding for our officers. Now I agree with the last person who wound up saying the standards should be across the board with every school. If you calling this a K through eight, then if my child leaves prime school to go to Pennington School, they should get the same training, the same education. Nothing should be lost. So under the new administration, I do believe and I feel very strongly that she will wind up moving things in the right path for the education to be in the way everyone will reach, shall reach, achieve what they need to achieve across the board.
Thank you, sir. Next. Mr. Lency, Mark Lency, how do you, how do you control costs and get more kids to graduate? Uh, you know, in four years, how do you do it?
Just for, okay, I unmuted myself. Good. Sorry about that. Uh, first, in controlling costs, I know it's been talked about here, various people. We have to have an, uh, uh, a full, an outside and full audit to cut the redundant, the unnecessary. And in some cases, I guess fictitious costs within the, uh, school district. Similar to what Lorna said, we need a standardized curriculum because we have to be able to teach all the kids the same thing. It's also good for comparing, uh, how different schools are performing. We need to hire and retain the best teachers we can, preferably from within the community. It's not an absolute necessity, but from within, within the community because they have an understanding of the community. This actually should be joined with, as we talked about before, better security measures because without security, the kids have, have a primary concern of safety and so do the teachers. And that's a distraction to the objective of education. Uh, part of that security measure actually would be a community coalition involving the parents, the teachers, the local houses of worship, the community centers. And the reason for that is the parents have to be more involved in their, the education of their kids. And involving them not only brings their ideas to the table, which may be beneficial to the school side, but gives them a takeaway of maybe better attributes coming from the district itself for teaching their own kids at home, which in turn helps us. Uh, when I talk about a partnership with the houses of worship, they're already, a lot of them are already conducting their own programs with kids and it's not a bad idea to reach out to them to see what they're doing and see if we can't dovetail some work with them and help, help to make the community stronger while educating the kids.
Okay. Thank you. Next. Warren Mitch. Sorry, Mitch.
It's okay. It's, it's either one is
I'll get, I'll get there.
Everybody still knows who I am. So one thing that everybody knows about me since the last three years that I've been on the board, I, I believe in homegrown, 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 all the way, homegrown talent. A way to, we want to keep costs down. Every new teacher who joins our district should be looked at as a future building leader. You groom these people, we grow with them, they grow with us and we partner with them. We partner with the building leads. We partner with the houses of worship. We partner with the city. This is how you keep costs down because when you get all pieces working in unison, I always go back to, I always go back to Voltron, when you got five lions and they all connect together and they work together as a team, become one and become very mighty. The only way to keep costs, you, you can only keep costs at, in one place, but for so long, because this district is constantly trying to give more to the students. How can they remain competitive? How can they be ready for college when the prerequisites for what success is after high school keeps changing and becoming more complicated? So when you look at the fact that we have not raised taxes over the past eight or six years where we, the, the little bit that we did increase was nowhere near the inflation rate. Nowhere near it. We'd never recovered from any of the inflation increases that came along over the last six years that we did not raise taxes. We never came close to it. All the neighborhood districts continue to raise their taxes accordingly. You want to keep costs down, make our teachers and our instructors, make our educators, our security force, our staff, our food service workers, make them feel appreciated. Make them feel like this is the place to stay. Nothing worse than having a bunch of great people leaving, then new people come in demanding more money than the people that just left and can't do the job as good as the people that just left. There's nothing worse than that. Using the tax, taxpayer money accordingly. That's what it's about. It's not about taking taxpayer money and just saying, here, we got lots of money to pay a bunch of people. No. It's about paying attention to what is coming across the table. When we sit at those meetings and resolve those resolutions, knowing what's in every attachment, asking questions and not going by a bunch of hearsaying slanderous nonsense. It's about, you got a question, let's go find out who knows the true answers. Let's get the facts. Let's use the data and then we come up to with an answers to what's going on. And if there's something that was done wrong, partnering to fix it. That's how you move forward. IRA, identify, resolve, advance.
Nice. Okay. Thank you. Next is, uh, Diana Roya. There you are.
Sorry. Um, so one of the things that I see that is going on is that, um, when it comes down to curriculum, I have been a product of the New York City Public School District. I know that sounds a little off topic, but, um, I, so in looking at how I've learned throughout the years in being in a public school system and seeing how my children are learning in this public school system, I do believe that the curriculum needs to change. However, I also believe that we also need to do our research before changing that curriculum. Um, there have been a lot of studies where when we had the Common Core, um, pilot, it, although it seemed to be working well, it was not working well. Um, primarily for parents because parents weren't understanding the educational part to educate their children when it was time for them to go home. Um, and then for the children, it was more of a confusing thing because parents back in the days, we used to carry the one instead of regrouping. So when it came time for learning these things for our, our children, it be, it became a struggle. And I feel like that's where the decline came in, in our children's education and learning, um, and, and exploring new ideas. Um, so I do believe that if we do go in that route of changing the curriculum, of course, and changing that, we also need to hold the teachers, um, in a space where they're able to understand and, and know how to direct the children in a way where they can come home and say, well, mommy, this is what I learned today and this is how they taught me how to do it. So that way now only are they're excited to learn about a new idea that they've learned at school, but now they're also educating their parents at the same time so that their parents can work together and cohesively with the school. I've always looked at the school to be a nine to five job for our parents. Um, but then when it's time for our babies to come back home, this is where our job starts to kick in. Now we're doing the overtime that the teachers are doing at home, at, at school. So when I look at all of these things, I truly do believe that if we're going to go that route in changing the curriculum, we need to do our research first and making sure that this curriculum is is cohesively enough for us to work together and, and make this a great change for our children's education and future.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we have two more. Um, I want to just reemphasize that bit about the cost piece because I mean, you, you could put all sorts of beautiful curriculum pieces in place. Um, you know, you could double per pupil spending and probably get better results, but we don't want to do that. Uh, Melissa Patterson, you're next.
Okay. So I'm going to roll it back a little bit because I think that to some extent we've gotten a little bit caught up in um, curriculum, which I think is another question, if I'm not mistaken, and I want to
Yeah, if we get to it, we're running a little bit late, so.
I want to focus really quickly. I want to bring some stats in just so we can all be on the same page. So let's start with the fact that our overhead is different than a lot of other districts, right? And I know everybody likes to say, um, you know, Mount Vernon is what about $35,000 per student, White Plains is around 33 and Neurocell's around 30. Now, everyone take a big step back. One of the big issues that Mount Vernon has that other organization, other locations don't have is we're considered a small, it's a small city school district. We are not the Scarsdale, the Eastchester, the Yonkers, the, well, Yonkers is a whole other animal. Let's put that aside. But we're not the Bronx Hills, right? So first of all, our state funding is addressed as if we are Bronxville or Pelham, which is entirely inaccurate. So put that, put in a box, put it aside for the moment. So US government just came out the other day, said over the last year, um, inflation is eight point five percent. That over the last, since two thousand sixteen, inflation is over thirteen percent, and I'm not including the recent year, twenty twenty-two. Over that same time period, White Plains increased their taxes thirteen and a half percent. Mount Vernon increased their taxes, I'm sorry, Nourishell increased their taxes twelve and a half percent. Over the same time period, if our budget gets approved on Tuesday, we would have increased one point eight nine percent. So let, let's say that one more time, just so we're on the same page, thirteen and a half percent, twelve and a half percent, one point eight percent. Great, put that aside. Graduation rates, are they a problem? Absolutely. Graduaries all over the country are a problem. It's not a Mount Vernon issue, it's a countrywide issue. Our state testing, if you compare us to comparable state, like comparable cities, we are in the ballpark. Am I saying we're knocking it out? No. But the problem is, and again, going back to using our resources correctly. Reading is fundamental. I know Chris and I have had this conversation. I was relying on him to teach me all about reading programs, because I'm not an educator. But there are problems that on our budget that other cities don't have. Our overhead is high, our facilities are high. We have neighborhood schools, which means our overhead is higher than most. Our neighborhood schools are small. That's an issue. We added pre-K for every student in the district. All of it costs money. So there are absolutely performance, keeping costs down, absolutely. But since twenty sixteen, taxes have been raised one point three nine percent. So Chris, when you mentioned a nominal raise, a nominal raise in taxes, we're talking nominal.
Yeah, gotcha. All right, thank you. All right, Adrian Saunders, bring it home.
Okay, so I almost forgot the question, but
So, so containing costs and improving outcomes. You got, are you still there?
So we do need to get more more parental involvement. Um, I understand that we have crisis intervention. Um, people at Edward Williams and Benjamin Turner that are helping bring the parents and the students together. And once the students are, it's all about how the students feel about themselves. I think it's more of, you know, when they feel more confident that they're able to go to school and we need to have vocational programs in the school. We need to have, um, we need to have schools open early and late. And I don't think people would have a problem with paying taxes if their students are, if the children are learning and it's safe and it's a safe environment. So I think that if we have early schools, more parent involvement, stay keeping the schools open late. I, I don't think it'd be a problem with, um, with raising the taxes. Uh, I know that we, before COVID, the, um, the district used to have, um, nights would have a basic math night, ELA night at schools, and it was a lot of parent involvement in that. And I think that, you know, the students felt safe, and I think that we need to bring that more over to the, uh, middle and high schools. Years ago, I don't want to date myself, but we used to have divisions in the high school. It was like a smaller learning center where I know that the division principal knew my mother and were called. I don't know if the principals at the high schools are able to identify each student. So I think that, um, I think if we go into like a, a more smaller learning environment and, and have the schools open early and late. Um, that may solve some problems.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, all right, I noticing we're, we're, we're over, over budget here on our time. So I think, um, we're going to go right to the, the closing, yeah, here. There was one more question about curriculum, but I want to remind everybody that um, I, I said, I think everyone except for Mark Stuckey filled out a questionnaire that covered a range of topics, like some people have asked about parenting, there was something about curriculum. There's, there's some stuff in there, so you can take a look at that, and I'm sure also you can reach out directly to candidates. And they will be happy to answer any of your questions. And I'll remind everyone again, Mark Stuckey, you can find him in an interview with Delia Farquharson on YouTube, um, so you can get more information about him there. I think what, right now, we should, we should close. I'm sorry, we didn't get to questions, other questions from, from the audience, but it's, it's late, it's past my bedtime, um, that's for sure. So I will wither on the vine pretty soon. So this is what I want to do. Let's just, I'm going to, I'm going to pick these names, just give me, give everybody, I should say, your best pitch, you know, why, why are you the right person for the job? What, what skills and value do you bring to the table? To, to help us move things ahead in our community. Um, and take, you know, you can take two minutes, uh, obviously, you know, you can take less and, but I'm going to hold you to two, so please don't run over. And Mark, you're the winner, you get to go first, lead us off, Mark, Mark Stuckey.
Good evening. Thank you once again for having this forum. I really appreciate it. It was really nice, put nicely put together. My role number is four A. What I bring to the table is past knowledge. I don't have to wind up starting to create or try to figure out what have to take place. I can come in and, and just pick up the ball and start running. One of the areas that I'm going to, I have three areas that I want to look into and, and work on is buildings and grounds. Special needs and health and wellness for our children. Why buildings and grounds? Because there's been a lot of mismanagement of funds going through buildings and grounds. Where the taxpayers' money has been going out that door like water. And no one have paid attention to it. If they did pay attention to it, they've been sleeping on you. Special needs, our special needs children, yes, they have new things coming out, uh, for, uh, to help our special needs population, you know, to give them that encouragement once again. But the question winds up being, once the program starts, once they implement it, if someone else new comes in, are they going to drop the ball on our children? And we don't need that. We need that ball once we started to keep going with our special needs population. And I, I hold that very, very dearly to me with the special needs, because one, hey, my wife is blind. And I'm with her all the times, taking care of her needs. And I know what it's like. You know, and the whole thing winds up being, if we don't take care of ours, we're going to lose them. And we, we cannot afford to leave, to lose our special needs children to the streets. My number, my role is four A.
Four A more, thank you. Diana Roya.
Just one quick remark, I open up the chat room to the candidates. If you want to post contact information, emails, um, if you have webpages, anything in there uh, for the general audience, you can do that right now, so they can contact you directly.
Go ahead, thank you, thank you. Go ahead, Diane.
All right, so, um, I can honestly say that this was one of the most toughest thing to do right now. Is having this open conversation with over, what, three hundred viewers? Um, and then some, because you know, you're also going to be posting this on social media. So I, I want to say this is an amazing time for me to actually have the opportunity to say something and to speak and to let you all know who I am as a person. Um, you can always, I, my door is always open, literally, it's always open. So you can always knock on my door, you can always give me a phone call, I will put my information on the chat. Um, just to let you know, I'm very open and I am always the one that loves to do, put things together. I'm very resourceful when bringing two forces together and making us a great entity. Um, so in voting for me, of course, I will always bring that resource, that extra help and assistance for our children, for our future. Um, and that's one of the reasons why I decided to run for school board trustee. Um, of course, my, um, number is seven eight. Um, this is something that I, I truly do believe that this would make a great opportunity. Not only for myself to understand, but also in a way of all of us to understand what's going on. I am also very transparent, so I will always be able to, um, if I can't find the answers, look for the answers and, um, bring it back to all of you to understand what's going on.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I want to remind our timekeeper to, to, you know, keep it tight here. Next is going to be Melissa Patterson. Why you, why, why should we keep you in there?
Um, I just want to say first, thank you so much for doing this. Um, everyone who logged in, everyone who watched. Um, it's really heartening to see everybody here. It's really great to see everybody involved. Um, I bring my experience from business, from nonprofit, from building management, from finance, from legal, and I bring it all to the board. Um, I've again, four years on the board, um, I have a serious passion to see change. And I really see a light at the end of the tunnel. And I want to really quickly, um, over the last four years, um, we restored the bond rating partially in, with a lot of help from the budget committee, which I chair. Um, I demand accountability from the administration, much to their chagrin often. Um, I always put the children first. We require now data dashboards from the administration, so we can see a running um, number, so we can always see where the district is at any given time. And what I'd ask everyone who's watching to do really quickly is do your research. Make sure, you know, I can say that the sky is green, you can walk out and see that the sky is not green. Um, the fact of the matter is it, it's, it's so important that everybody do their own research, don't accept that what anybody tells you, including myself, feel free to look into anything I say. And if I say something that's not right, call me on it, because I am not infallible. I have a full-time job, I have a family, that's, you know, I understand that. Um, and then the other thing is just with everybody is, you know, we're expanding, we're getting better at these things. We just started it in the ELL committee, we just started, we're looking at, and we didn't get to talk about curriculum, but one of the things we're looking at is what do our kids need to know for tomorrow's job market, not today's job market, tomorrow? What language do our kids have to have? All of these things is what we're looking at now to make those changes. Thank you so much, one A.
One A, okay, thank you. Next, I have Warren Mitchell, Mitch. Uh, Warren, it's going to be Warren.
Okay, it's good, it's good. All right, so first, Chris, I'd like to thank you and Axel very much for putting this together. It was very well done, as I will say, as Mark Stuckey said, very well done. Gave us the opportunity to really come out and speak and address the public and a lot of the topics. And, you know, a long time ago, you know, a guy came out on the stage at the musical award show, and he said, you know, that his music group was for the kids, for the babies. That's what one A, five A, and seven A is for, the kid, the babies. The babies, the taxpayers, the staff, the faculty. Listen, the bottom line is the same things that you have seen me do for the past three years, nothing's going to change. On buildings and grounds, not going to change. Health and wellness, making sure the lunch is coming out, we got better food and menus, I'm going to be at the forefront. Making sure how breakfast is coming, asking people why things aren't in place and getting those things in place. I'm going to still be the same person that you can come to, talk to, see me and stop a shop, catch me over in BJ's, see me in the street, park in my car. You can check me, ask me what's going on. You live across the street, you could call me from the window, ask me, I'll come talk to you, I'm going to be the same person. So you put me in my position to do this further, it's beautiful for me, because I can give back to the district that helped make me, the city that helped build me. It's the money earning, this is our home. Okay, and we're thinking about the future, not just the present, see? Look the word up on any of the documentation that we've received recently. Control F on your keyboard, on either of those audits, the word misappropriation does not show up. Let's make sure we do what trustee Patterson and Melissa just said. Look up your own facts and ask questions. You can always come to us, because this is not about a gotcha thing. I have PR background, I have finance background, public relations, communication and partnering. That's what school board trustee is all about. That's where it's supposed to stay. One A, five A, seven A, all the way.
Thank you, Mitch, good luck. All right, Adrian Saunders, you're up. Why? You got it? There you go, okay.
Hi, thank you so much for having this forum. Um, I'd like to speak about the violence in our schools and how the district is reallocating high school students, uh, with behavior problems to Bosie. So I just wanted to say, I want to remember, wanted you guys to remember that. But I always wanted to let you guys know that I put, I get maybe ten calls a day from people, parents, uh, about their students, and I try to um, help them out, you know, I've always had an open door, my phone must be on the bathroom wall, because I get calls from people all the time. But my, my mission and my hope is this, this next term is to implement more vocational programs for the schools, and we're going to have them come out with, um, certificates, so they can just go right into the job market. You know, safety for the students and staff is very important. And I listen to parents and I want to bring those issues to the table, and which I always do. So I want to thank you guys for having me, and we're at, um, myself is, um, Lorna is two, I'm three, and Mark Stuck, and Mark Lindsay is six.
Thank you very much, Adrian, thank you. Uh, next we have Lorna, Lorna Kerwin. You're up.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Thank you for having this forum. You know, I must say that I'm excited to be running for the school board trustee seat. Um, I have been volunteering in this community for, um, quite some time, and he has taught me the importance of stewardship. He has taught me, um, that behind every sacrifice of my time that I give is a hidden joy of accomplishment, that I, that I made a difference in someone's lives. You know, I've been advocating for students, parents and the community. Um, and as a trustee, I would just continue to doing the same. I bring my professional background to the table, and I would also bring it to the school board. Um, the school board trustee is, um, is a trustee for the community that elects them. As a trustee, I will be accessible, I'll be willing to be colla, collaborating with my fellow board members, I will listen. Um, and with the community, you know, and the, the district staff. I would never lose sight, never, of the bottom line, which is the student achievement and implementation of the policies um, of the, the, the school district. As an effective, um, effective trustee, I will be always be loyal, I'll be fair, and I'll be flexible and compassionate. You know, so I ask you to trust me to be your, um, your next school board trustee. And on May seventeen, I also, also ask you to go out and vote for me, Lorna Kerwin, two A, Adrian Sanders, three A, and Mark Lindsay, six A, so we could make a difference um, in the lives of the students and bring back, um, bring back trust into the school district. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Morna, and, and good, good luck to you. All right, uh, Mark, Lency, you, you get, you clean up.
Okay, hey. First off, thank everybody for, thank you everybody for being here, taking the time to be here and listen to us all. I'd like to think I'm the right person for the job, because I am somewhat of an outside person in Mount Vernon. I'm not joined at the hip to any of the local officials that seem to run over and over. Uh, I'm a business owner, I'm going to bring my drive, my familiarity with the trades to our vocational program, I'm going to programs, I will work to jumpstart teaching of the building trades and help develop a curriculum that best serves the future needs of the kids. My background in law enforcement not only is going to permit me to have the insight into the security measures we need, but it's also going to give me access to other people in the security industry who can help me to help the district to create a better plan with less vulnerabilities. My training in evaluating, inspecting safety and security protocols of facilities is also going to assist me in that security area. I've worked multiple jobs my whole life, I'm going to continue to work hard for Mount Vernon, so please vote for me, six A. Adrian, two A, Lorna, three A. Thank you, be well, God bless.
All right, well, thank you, we ran a little bit over, uh, it was, you know, a little under two hours. Um, but I appreciate everybody coming out. I, I hope this was, this was helpful, and I hope that, um, you know, we can build upon this next year, because I, I, and I know I'm not alone in this, have, have a strong belief that we, we have a lot of resources. have a lot of resources in the community that we can bring together to keep moving, um, the district, library, the city forward. Um, I, I, I strongly do believe that. So this is very, very encouraging to see so many people out here.